Good evening, Wareham. Excuse the delay. And welcome to the Select Board meeting of February 6th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, tonight with us is Mr. Slaven, myself, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Whiteside. Also with us is Mr. Bowen and Mr. Sullivan. We are missing, sorry about that. We are currently missing Mr. Bessie, we'll be here shortly.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Chadwick, could you please say the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands under God, who is well free and justice from
Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Slaven.
Okay, number one, again, local less than cable station. There is a program on Wareham which people should try and get to see. It's quite enlightening and it shows the town in extremely great light. It's also available on YouTube on the ENE TV. I hope you have a chance to see it. It was basically provided through the Community Events Committee. There was a meeting last week. Basically, myself, Ken Buckland, the Mass DOT District Five, which covers that area, Mass DOT Bridge Group and also the Road Group. We discussed the Swift Beach Light Intersection. Looking at the possibility of putting some temporary lighting in the intersection to help as well. Looking for some possible mechanical, you know, lit size solar power. Until the project is done, the project is moving up and there's a good chance the majority of it could be done before the end of the year with the light, et cetera. The road will be realigned. The crosswalks will move where they actually will work properly and the sidewalks will be done and approved in both sides. And the telephone poles will be Sorry, the wife is readjusting the screen.
All we can see is your chin.
Sandy said they can only see my chin. Sorry about that. And they will be removing the telephone poles and condensing them down so and they'll be off the sidewalk so you can actually get by if you have ABA issues. Okay, WCTV, my, I've been talking to them for a while and also migrant moderator. And on this Friday, we're going to do our first program on town meeting. Getting into town meeting times to try and explain to people how town meeting works under these rules. What the procedures are for questions, et cetera, asking for different things. And also kind of explaining when an article gets passed, it doesn't mean it's actually going to happen. It's the best simple answer I can give you. There's a lot of There's a lot of interesting things about how things work. And I think it's time we try and help the public understand better what's going on. And let's see what else we've got today. I think that's really it for today. It's been an interesting day for me.
Thank you. Yes, it has. Mr. Chadwick?
I'm good at this time.
No?
I'm, I'm good. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Announcements, Mr. Chadwick?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. I have none this evening as well. Mr. Wolverton, would you raise your hand, please? Noah, would you let Mr. Wolverton in, please? Okay, as I explained earlier, we don't yet have a recommendation from the Library Board of Trustees, Board of Library Trustees for Mr. Wolverton, although he has been invited to this evening's meeting. So I think it's appropriate that we interview him, ask him any questions that you would like after he has an opportunity to tell us why he'd like to be on the Board of Library Trustees. And then we will put it on an agenda in the future when we get the recommendation from the Board of Library Trustees. Mr. Wolverton, Wolverton, would you identify yourself, please, for the record?
My name is Rich Wolverton. I live on Dinaque Road.
And can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the Board of Library Trustees?
My wife and I are newly retired. We've moved to Wareham a couple of years ago and I'm looking for a way to help my new community of Wareham. And I thought maybe the library was a great place to meet people, to support some of the things the town needs and see if I couldn't at least make a small contribution to the town.
Thank you. Either one of my peers have a question to Mr. Wolverton?
No, I just would like to thank him for stepping up. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so we will not be able to vote on, on you tonight, but you don't need to come back. We will put you on the agenda for two weeks from today. I'm guessing that we will vote to authorize you. In the meantime, you should probably do your ethics training and your open meeting law training so that you have all of the certificates that you would need in order to take part of, to be sworn in and then take part. Okay?
I'd be delighted to do that. I was a 20-year employee of the Commonwealth and have taken those trainings many times.
Excellent. Then you know you just pushed the button.
I know to push the buttons and keep going. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Chadwick, I'd like to go to 7A, please. A donation, please.
Received. I move I move to accept the donation from Advocates for Wareham for Seniors, Inc. to the Council on Aging for $728.30.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donation. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion on 7B, please?
I move to approve the opt-out and reduction fee application for curbside billing fiscal year 24 for 91 $911.60, sorry.
Motion made and seconded to approve the opt-out and reduction fees. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. 7F. Mr. Chadwick, this is a motion of this is a discussion to release a performance bond regarding the subdivision road on AD Makepeace Crane Landing. In the packet, you have the draft minutes of the planning board meeting when this was approved by the planning board. So if you, and it's, it's all set to go. I've checked it out with everybody. If you choose to make the motion to release, you could make it subject to the certification or the approval of the draft planning board meeting. Are there any questions on it?
Yeah, I think we just received an email from the neighborhood there. If you remember back a few years ago, we, we had litigation started from some neighbors in there about the snow plowing for it. So I think we need to, you know, maybe with the Yeah, we should respond and hold off on this because suddenly we're going to be plowing this when it was explicitly that we were not supposed to. I'd like to see, you know, where it says that we need to recoup our costs. That was in the whole letter, so.
Okay.
Maybe we need to just get something and get together with the developer on it to help explain to the neighbors.
Okay, I will, we will, we will not make a motion. Okay, it is about to be 7:15 and so I would ask that Philip Warren, John Iada, and anyone else who is here for the 7:15 hearing, which is for Retrocade LLC, please raise your hand so we can let you into the meeting. And if you have anyone else with you, you can remind us now, Mr. Warren, Mr. Iada. And I won't be able to have Mr. Chadwick make the motion to open the hearing until 7:15. Oh, I think it just turned to be 7:15. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion to open the hearing, please, sir?
I move to open the hearing for the application for Retrograde LLC DBA Retrograde Philip M. Warren, Manager, 176 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. For annual common vic license, all alcohol beverage license under the provisions of Chapter 138, 12, and 15A common vic license under the provisions of Chapter 140 two, an entertainment license for weekday and Sunday entertainment under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law for year 2024.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
So, second, is there any further discussion on whether to open the hearing or not? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now open. I'm going to
Mr. Bessie is here now.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. 7:15, Mr. Bessie. I'm going to note that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Slaven. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Iada, who I believe is the representative for Mr. Warren, for the two Mr. Warrens. And then would you identify yourself for the record, sir? And then whichever one of the Mr. Warrens would be speaking on this particular one, that would be fine.
Sure. Good evening. My name is John Iada McDermott Colton Miller, located at 28 State Street in Boston. Joining me this evening is Philip Warren, who is the proposed manager of record. He's also an LLC manager of the controlling entity. And I also see Danny Warren present, Mr. Danny Warren is one of the owners as well. We will focus first on, this is 176 Bain Street. This is Retrocade. It's a combination, the name, kind of a retro arcade. But this is the building that most recently housed the Advanced Engine Rebuilding Headquarters. As most of you are aware, the Warrens purchased this building not too long ago, looking to revitalize this and add some life to downtown. It will be a complete remodel of the inside. And the idea here is to have a full-service restaurant serving lunch, dinner, as well as brunch on Sundays. It will be a gastropub, which is going to be a focus on everything from gourmet burgers to Asian-influenced dishes and appetizers. It's, it's really a focus on well-executed comfort food and paired with craft beers, signature cocktails and the like. What makes this space even more unique is the Warren's vision to include retro arcade games. These are games that are 30, 40, 45 years old. These are the old stand-up machines. So looking to have an entire area in the rear of the building where this will be the main focus. But they also envision this as a multi-use space. And not only the arcade games will be there, but they also want to draw in other people for events like live music. It could be trivia nights, a DJ, movie nights, things like that. So they really want to revitalize this and utilize this space as most as they can. Again, the focus here is going to be on the food. It will be complemented with the, with the drinks and the other activities as well. And speaking to the public need, again, the, the town saw there was a need for additional licenses. This is one of the locations that was slated for the special legislation license. But I think it will be something that is sought after and something that the residents and visitors alike will, will come to enjoy. Phil is presently tip-certified and all staff will be tip-certified. He's been working very closely with an advisor who has operated similar operations, whether it's a bar and arcade combination. So he thinks he has a really good handle on that operation and how it's going to look. So the front of the house will be a restaurant and the back will be this, this arcade in open space, which would really be great for some of the entertainment, live, like I said, live music and the arcade games. Phil is here. If you have any questions specifically to the operations or anything like that. But I can certainly do my best, Danny, answering any questions the, the board may have as well.
Thank you. Phil, if you just would identify yourself for the record, please. State your name and that you are the applicant.
You're muted.
I think you're on mute, Phil.
You're muted right now.
Always get someone. I'm Phil Warren. My office currently is at 575 Wareham Street, Middleboro, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Retrocade LLC.
Thank you. Do either of my, oh, do either of my three members have, is either correct? Yeah, I guess it is. Have any questions of Mr. Warren or Mr. Iada? Mr. Chadwick?
It's not so much of a question, but near my sister's house in New Jersey, Yester, Yestercade is open down there. And when I saw that you were opening something like that up here, my kids and I were jumping for joy. So I'm extremely happy to see this is happening in this town. And I'm extremely happy to see it down on Main Street where we need a lot of help down there. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
For that.
Mr. Bessie, you're muted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So Phil, first, I want to congratulate you on, you know, your endeavors down on Main Street and taking on the, the tough industry of, of restaurants and, you know, adding some type of entertainment to it. But if, you know, if you could just share a little bit of your, of your background as far as your, your knowledge of the, the restaurant industry and, you know, why you chose to want to incorporate, you know, retro gaming into your facility.
Absolutely. So I'm new to the restaurant industry. My, my previous career was in the industrial coatings industry where I was a, a technical manager. I managed a team. Did inspections out in the field, traveled around a lot and in my travels, found myself in more than a couple of retro arcades or barcades, as some people call them out in the world. And that's what kind of sparked my interest in it, seeking those out in, in the past, traveling around. I came into this opportunity at the time in my life where I was ready for a career change. I left my previous company. I had sold some, some stock in that company and signed a non-compete. So it was time to start new. So I came into this opportunity, you know, and I saw the potential there to kind of do what I loved, especially during COVID, is when I first started brewing on this idea. Me and my wife were stuck in the house and we found that we both really wanted to go to an arcade, which is something that we hadn't done since we were teenagers. And, you know, I have a son, he's six now. He, he grew up through COVID and developed some pretty severe anxieties. And actually, one of the first things that ever got him to not be afraid of public was an arcade. So at first it was, you know, let's turn the basement in our house into one. And then it kind of grew into this idea of, you know, let's open one. Now, as far as the restaurant industry is concerned, most of my experience, I'll admit, as a, as a patron, I have got tip-certified recently. I plan to continue my education for the rest of my life, you know, at least until retirement. My plan moving forward to make sure I have a grasp on these restaurants is to continue to learn, but also to surround myself with an experienced team. I'm working very closely with a gentleman named Jack Texera. He's our executive chef. He has 35 years' experience managing multiple restaurant groups. He's, he's a member of our team. And before opening Retrocade, I plan to hire for two more management positions. And these are going to be seasoned managers with at least 10 years of experience.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
No, I, I can appreciate that and always love to see people, you know, jump to do new things and, and, and take career path changes and, and take on the challenges. Just one last question. How many, how many jobs do you think that this restaurant will create here in town?
It's hard to pinpoint it. I do plan to hire everyone locally. We were talking about this just the other day and it's probably in the range of 15 to 20 for this, for this project. I'd say 75% of those jobs will be full-time, 25% will be part-time.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. No, no more questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Slaven?
I've been following this with Phil for a while, obviously with his dad. And you, you know, I know Hans from a long time ago. We hated to see him, you know, retire. He provided an excellent service of people all over the country, actually, for engine repair work. I expect that Phil will do a great job. Obviously, his presentation is extremely thorough. It's well thought out and looking forward to this project. And again, thanks Phil very much for taking the risk to do this.
Thank you. We do see you now, Mr. Warren, Danny Warren, so we can see you and I'm guessing you're not muted. But if, would you like to add to this, sir?
The only thing I would add is that Jack Texer and I go back of Jack's complete lifetime. He's a master chef. He's in Las Vegas right now to Chef's Conference. He'll be right there looking out for Phil all the way and so will I.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone in the audience who would choose to speak against the applicant? Please raise your hand. Mr. Chadwick, I see none?
I see none.
Then I will accept a motion to close the hearing, sir.
I move to close the hearing application for Retrograde LLC DBA Retrograde Philip M. Warren, Manager, 176 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. For an annual common vic, all alcohol beverage license under the provisions of Chapter 138-12 and 15A, a common vic license under the provisions of Chapter 140-2 and an entertainment license for weekdays and Sunday entertainment under the provisions of Master in the Law for year 2024.
There's second to that motion, motion made and seconded to approve. I would note for the record that the only thing that they don't have yet is a certificate of occupancy. And we would be holding the license until all of the paperwork is in fact in place. Would you choose to amend your motion, Mr. Chadwick, to add that?
So moved.
Thank you. And may I have that in the second as well, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. So there is a motion to grant, subject to the receipt of all of the paperwork. And I'm sure that when the time gets closer, that that will be available to us. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I'm just going to say, I want to play Whack-a-Mole. I want a receipt, a reserved seat at Whack-a-Mole. I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
I'll vote yes, but please don't provide that for.
Mr. Bessie?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. So, Mr. Iada and Mr. Warren, you understand that there is some paperwork that needs to be granted. I'm not sure what you are looking at for an opening date. Do, do you have an estimate for that, either of you?
Go ahead, go ahead, Phil.
I'm, I'm very hopeful for this summer, you know, in the building process, how sometimes things can, can stretch. But I think it's a realistic idea that we should be open for the summer, early or midsummer.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to accept a motion to open the it is 7:25. Yep. Open the hearing, the second hearing, Mr. Chadwick, please.
I move to open the hearing for the application for Warren's Harbor View LLC DBA Warren's Harbor View Philip M. Warren, Manager, 59 Main Street. Wareham, Mass. For the annual common vic, all alcohol beverage license under the provisions of Chapter 138-12 and 15A common vic license under the provisions of Chapter 140-2 and an entertainment license for weekdays and Sunday entertainment under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law for year 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move, open the hearings. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now open. Mr. Iada?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, John Iada, on behalf of the applicant, Warren's Harbor View LLC, doing business as Warren's Harbor View. Again, joining me this evening is Phil Warren, the proposed manager of record, as well as Danny Warren, one of the owners of the LLC. This is 59 Main Street. This is the former Greer Lover property, which had been vacant for several years. The Warrens purchased this with the envisioning and the thought behind this of putting a, a brand-new building and facility here, which is going to really revitalize this, this property. It is very much far along in the, in the process and it's an absolutely beautiful building. And I think many people are very excited to, to, you know, partake in this and to, to be a patron of this restaurant. This is a more traditional sit-down, upscale restaurant with a, also focused with an event and function space. The, the traditional steak seafood, but done, as we've heard, Mr. to, to share his experience, that he's going to have some great menu and choices down there. And the alcohol will be a great complement to that, whether it's some craft beer, some wine, or some signature cocktails as well. I, I just envision it going to be a, a great place for the entire neighborhood and the residents to come to. Again, the public need was referenced and addressed to the extent that the town specifically wanted to revitalize certain areas of downtown. And this is one such area. Again, it was to try to, to promote the economic stimulus of, of the town. And I think this is an absolutely perfect example of something that can happen within the town. And again, I think the Warrens are to be given some credit for investing a lot of time and energy and certainly money for this project. So I think it's just going to be just a great experience all around. This, this concept again is more traditional. I think they envision many times to have certain functions, whether it's a wedding or different parties, events, things like that, just certain celebrations that are going to occur here at this space, in addition to the traditional dining that you're going to, to see at 59 Main Street. There will be occasion for live entertainment, again, mostly with these events, whether it's the weddings or certain celebrations, whether it's live music or DJ or band or dancing. So that, that's the scope of the entertainment. But for, for most times, any of the nights that there's going to be you know, just the main service of the restaurant, there'll just be maybe some background music or one or two instrumentalists for, for ambiance. This timing, I think, and Phil can correct me if I'm wrong, or Danny can, but I think this one's going to be advanced a little bit more. Hopefully, we're looking at a springtime opening. And certainly you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's something that, you know, don't have to wait too much longer. And I, I think it's right around the corner for this great experience. Again, Phil is joining me tonight as well as Danny, if you had any specific questions for this property. Thank you.
Would either one of you like to address us on that project, Phil or Danny?
I can, sure, certainly.
Go ahead.
I was just going to tell you that this, this is a beautiful building. If you haven't had an opportunity to, to see it, I, I can't wait till you do. We're far along in the process. This building's kind of special to our family, you know, other than how, being this beautiful waterfront timber frame building. The, the, the pairing of Danny Warren, my father, who's a Wareham native, and Jack Texera, a chef who is also a Wareham native, that wasn't mentioned earlier. They worked together many years ago. I think it was the, the, the early eighties. Jack was actually Jack's first job, was working for my father in a small restaurant called Warren's Four Corners. So it's very exciting that, that, you know, they went off and had full careers and they've come back together and they have this opportunity to you know, do this restaurant together and that I, I can help manage it.
Thank you. Any questions for my board members? Mr. Chadwick?
First and foremost, I want to say I've had the pleasure of taking a tour of this, this soon to be new restaurant in town. Absolutely stunning. Beautiful work through the whole building. Looks beautiful. I think it's going to be an awesome contribution to Main Street. Second, for a lot of people that don't know, I'm just going to point this out right here. The Warrens are a very large contributor to helping our youth and youth sports and youth everything in this community. Ever since I've moved here, I've known about him and his family. And I just want to say, I can't thank you enough for that. You're amazing for it and I, I thank your whole family for it.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, you had your hand up next.
Thank you. Most people know that going back when Baker had the property and it was all run down and we had issues and everything else. I worked for quite a long time to get the property cleaned up, tried to Long time to get the property cleaned up, tried to uh have the Baker's develop, but didn't work out. Several other people, uh, then Mr. Buckland was able to basically turn lower Main Street in what we call an economic opportunity zone. And I went out and grabbed Danny, and I said, here's a way to save some money on your taxes. Uh, Danny basically stepped up and has gone ahead and done really a, a large project. I hope people understand. This is not like a half a million dollar project. This is a multi-million dollar project that he's spending money on. He could just have sat back and enjoyed his retirement or whatever. He didn't have to do this. I kind of asked him, and he was more than happy to step up and do this with Phil. And the town should be extremely happy that someone has taken initiative to. Start, well, I'm hoping is a full development of our waterfront. So again, thank you both.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie.
Um, yeah, first I just wanna um, you know, thank the Warrens for their uh. Um, willingness to uh invest in Wareham and, and seeing the future that uh we have, especially down in the, in, in the Main Street area. Um, I've had uh several conversations uh with Mr. Warren uh about the project, and. Uh, it's definitely not one that has been a, a cakewalk or easy street. Uh, there's been a, a, a lot of bumps in the road. Um, but uh he's persevered through them uh and didn't let those uh discourage or derail his thought process about continuing to. Um, develop uh down on Main Street. Uh, so I just want everybody to understand that uh. This is a family that is committed to um helping Main Street um revitalize itself. Uh, and I want to uh thank them for their time and efforts and energies, and uh we're really excited to see. Um, how Main Street comes together, and this is definitely probably going to be the staple uh of what uh, you know, Main Street looks like. Uh, and I'm just very excited to uh see them get open uh and really start to uh be uh much bigger contributors to the community. Uh, with everything that goes on down there. So thank you for your time, efforts, and energies, and we're excited to see where it takes you.
Thank you. I just wanna say that uh Mr. Tefshera and Mr. Warren, as well as Stephen Chinomi. Contributed greatly to the success of the luncheon after the Veterans Day parade, which we revitalized after a six-year hiatus, so. The meal was spectacular, and thank you, Mr. Danny Warren for that. Um, and again, I. Want to speak, it just extends thanks to you for putting in a substantial amount of time and energy and clearly money. The building is gorgeous on the inside. So thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Please raise your hand. And if there's anyone in the audience who would choose to speak against the applicant, please raise your hand. I see none. I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing for the application for Warren's Harbor View LLC DBA Warren's Harbor View. Philip M. Warren manager fifty nine Main Street, under the provisions of chapter one thirty eight dash twelve and fifteen A a common Vic. Uh, license under the provisions, sorry, under the provisions of chapter one forty dash two. And an entertainment license for weekdays and Sunday entertainment under the provisions of Mass General Law for the year of twenty twenty four.
Subject to the receipt of the certificate of occupancy and other paperwork, is that?
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, subject to. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself, it is so. Thank you, Mr. Iata and the Mr.'s Warrens. Thank you so much for your investment and your belief in Wareham. We very much appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion on seven, on six C, sir.
Madam Chair, I think uh, I think Mr. Warren was trying to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which Mr. Warren?
Danny.
Danny, do you choose to address us?
Oh, they, they, they kicked him out.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm sure it would have been wonderful.
Danny, if you want to say something, put your hand back up.
Phil, you have to figure out how that works.
Oh, you, you know what? You're, you're cruising. If he chooses to come back in, I, I'm, okay, yes, uh, Noah, so would you please let Mr. Danny Warren back in? I apologize, Danny. Didn't see you. Noah, would you let Mr. Danny Warren back in the meeting, please? He's got his hand up. Okay, while I'm waiting for that, Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion on s- six C.
I move to approve an application from Robert Brady Junior for a one-day Laker license on May twenty sixth, twenty twenty four to the Wareham Oyster Festival Inc. At Pizzoli Square.
Is there a second to that? Motion made and seconded to approve. This is for use of the, of the one-day Laker license. All of the other applications for street closing. And use of town property and other things are going to be signed off by Mr. Sullivan. This is Mr. Sullivan's favorite event. I think, or one of his favorite events for the town of Wareham, and we're very, very pleased to see it coming back. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Uh, again, yes, and I want everybody to understand this particular event is self-funded, self-sustaining. And really, Bob, Linda, everybody, the Vicky's, need to thank everybody for what they've done here.
Um, Mr. Bessie?
I'm sorry, no, I, I was just itching my eye.
No, it's a, where I'm going for the.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you very much. Mr. Danny Warren, I'm sorry to have cut you off. Would you like to address us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I, I wanted to thank Ken Buckland for the time. That he spent helping me understand how the, the fund would work. I want to thank Alan for bringing it to my attention. And I want to thank the planning board guys and all the guys that put up with someone that had never done something like this before to get it to where it is at this point. But most of all, Ken Buckland was a real friend through this whole thing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Um, to, 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 we are going to go to. The discussion under seventy, discussion and possible vote to amend the CPC tax from three percent to one percent. We cannot do that as a body that would have to go back before the town meeting. But um I did a whole lot of, the reason it's on the agenda is because over the years I've heard from people, well, what are we spending our money on? Why do we, why can't we go down to one percent or two percent? Um, we were, Wareham was one of the first communities in the Commonwealth to adopt the CP CPA Act. And um I did send to you earlier, no, yesterday, I guess, a fourteen-page document that lists how much. Um, Wareham has benefited from the CPC Act. And approximately twenty million dollars worth of investments because of our acceptance of it. Um, so I am putting it out there so that the public can understand. What, what it does and where the money comes from. Um. So, Mr. Slaven, do you wanna do that? Or do you do that?
Well, I'd probably do that if I wanna sleep in my bed tonight.
Okay, you better do that then.
Uh, CPC is uh giving the, the town the opportunity to repair. Buildings, to do recreation work. If you look at the playgrounds over the last four or five years, they've all been updated virtually. Uh, and it's just a lot of things that you don't realize that comes up that CPC uses money for with a town that doesn't have the money. And it is a lot basically pay for these, but when these particular properties get sold, and the money comes back and gets reinvested. Reinvesting, it's almost like a mini redevelopment authority of its own. Um, the three percent is, again, figuring out when you get over a hundred thousand dollars value of a house. It's a small amount of money, uh, considering that the, the taxes that we pay, although some people disagree with me, are low compared to most communities around us. And it's a, an asset that uh basically has been well-used overall over the last, I guess, must be fifteen years now. Goes back to the Tremont Nail Factory uh with the ideas of what they're gonna do to develop that. Was, we're waiting to see how that ends up, but that's another piece that's gonna end up in the right place as well. So it, it, it doesn't make any sense. If you bring it to one percent, it becomes ineffective, and you're putting money into a fund that can't do much at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it, the document does have the total amount that we have received since the inception of the app, which was in two thousand. Two. Um, twenty million, three hundred thirty-six dollars, three hundred thirty-six, one hundred, twenty million, three hundred thirty-six. Thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars. And as Mr. Slaven has explained, we've been able to do a lot of projects, particularly with um. The playgrounds that we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do otherwise. Mr. Chadwick or Mr. Bessie, do you want to make comments on?
Yes.
Bessie, go ahead. Bessie first.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, the, the CPC, I mean, I, I don't think that I can say enough good things about what it's done for the town. Um, and for the. What I consider a small amount of money that is attributed from individual um taxpayers, uh, I don't think. That we'd be able to see the amount of stuff that's been done if we were to take away that three percent and turn it into one percent. Um, it, it's a small price to pay to try to help our community continue to uh. Grow and get better and, and take some places that uh otherwise, you know, might not be so pretty or usable. Um, and making them look better and turning them into usable spaces. So um, I really don't see a, a, a good benefit to us um making those changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
I'm gonna add on to that. Um. If we even thought of lowering it down to one percent, the problem is, is we'll never get it back up to three percent. Um, with time, uh, things start to fall apart, become decrepit. Uh, and then we're not gonna have the funds for it. One thing people need to realize is that uh twenty million dollars. Uh, plus that has been uh used over the years is not what we have in the bank account now. Um, and like Mr. Slaven said, if we move it down to one percent and we keep funding these projects, uh. Big thing for me is the playgrounds. Then what happens when they uh start falling apart? Uh, we're not gonna have the money to fix them. Uh, and then they just become huge eyesores. Uh, so, yeah, I think everybody would love a tax break, but. We'll never get it back up, and then the town will just start falling apart. So, my opinion, I say keep it at three percent.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to weigh in or not? Please feel free to.
It's a. I, I have, no, I think we've utilized it well, the community as a whole. Uh, you see it for. Well, you've talked about some buildings. There's open space that's, that's happened, recreation, the golf course. I think it's been well utilized, and again, it's, you know, there has been matching funds. It's reduced over the years due to more communities coming in, so. I think it's, you know, there's a few times you can talk about the foresight of some of the, the folks before, and that was, uh, I think. Joining into community preservation was one of them. So it's uh nicely done.
Thank you. Um, I'll accept a motion. I, I agree with all of you, obviously. Um, I'll accept a motion to confirm that, that the selectmen recommend that we stay at three percent.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to confirm that the select board uh chooses to stay at the three percent. And understand that it is a town meeting vote that would have to change it anyway. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are skipping over item C, seven C on the agenda. And we are skipping over seven E on the agenda. And we are skipping, we are holding off on seven F, which is the performance bond. So we're moving on to possibly amending the town bylaw as listed on the thing to reduce the finance committee members from nine to seven. This is on here because um I know that the finance committee is actually discussing. Recommending under the bylaws that we go from a nine-member board to a seven-member board. Mr. Slaven, I believe you were at that meeting. Am I correct?
Yes, uh, they tested at the meeting, uh, they, I think, uh, had five members present, which gives them a quorum barely because there's nine members. Uh, listed there as of right now, I believe they have seven on their current list that are active. And I think three are up for reappointment come June of uh twenty twenty four, which is now. Uh, and they did express the desire to go down to seven. So I would think that we would go ahead and, once they give us their official voted letter, that we put it on the, for the springtime meeting.
So it would be a um. It would be a bylaw amendment which would have to be approved by the Attorney General's Office.
Correct. There's, there's no, there's no restriction having to have nine.
No, there's no, that's correct. I researched the law, so. Um, it seems to be a self-correcting um request, if you will. Mr. Bessie or Mr. Chadwick, do you want to weigh in? If not, well, yes, Mr. Chadwick, sorry.
Uh, I think one thing that people need to realize, 'cause I'm, I'm pretty sure there's gonna be some people out there going, well, why are they doing this? Uh, the reason being is, is nine people, it's, it's hard to get nine people in the same room at the same time. Uh, and like Mr. Slaven said, um. You know, they need the quorum of five. Uh, even getting five in the same room at the same time is, is hard. Um, and if that doesn't happen, then you, you're not having these meetings, and once again, it's a lack. So I, I think it's a smart idea.
Okay, great. Mr. Bessie?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just piggyback. I, I think that if they're consistently seeing uh five members showing up to meetings. Um, reducing that number to seven only makes it so that if they do have somebody that doesn't, isn't able to make it, and they're at four, they're still have a quorum, and they can. Hold their meetings because the, the, the finance committee does a lot here in town, and uh without them being able to meet and, and go over the things that they need to go over. Uh, a lot of the financial stuff that uh is presented at town meetings and whatnot, um, wouldn't be able to be um seen and shown, so. Uh, it only makes sense that if that's uh where they're looking, that uh we go from nine to seven just to make it so that we can guarantee that their meetings will continue.
Excellent. Um, so I'll put it on an agenda for subsequent to them taking an official vote on it at their meeting, which I think is sometime this week. Then the second um. Discussion that I would like to have is to amend the town charter section five dash three, which you have a copy of. Because what it says is. When the town meeting is to be held in the spring of each year, no later than January twenty fifth, the town administrator on the director of the. Select Board shall submit to the Finance Committee a proposed budget. Well, we know that that's impossible when you have a state. Um, that simply doesn't give you uh figures until sometimes maybe even in June. So um, I'm, I'm gonna ask Mr. Sullivan it, what his. Well, I'll ask you later. I think we need to amend that. Um, January twenty fifth, January twenty third date out because it is something that. January twenty fifth, it's an impossible date. Um, that doesn't mean that Mr. Sullivan gets off the hook for creating a budget. Mr. Slaven?
The reason we have the problem, we've moved it once already. It actually used to be in December, which is completely ridiculous. Because I think this year the state didn't give us their final budget till late September. Which is, you know, six months later. Uh, it's none of that is you have, your capital planning committee has to do their, their, their work by a certain date, which would be in November. Then you have basically the school committee, which was December. I think it's early January now. And January twenty fifth, just, it doesn't work. You're also dealing between Thanksgiving and New Year's. And everything is truncated during that timeframe, even though it seems like two or three months, the, the effective time you have to work on stuff is really short. Uh, my recommendation, we've talked about this before, is to go out to somewhere around March fifteenth. And then work back from there, so the finance committee, capital planning, and the school committee have reasonable time as well.
Mr. Bessie?
Uh, I mean, I, I, I completely agree. I mean, I, I think we had a, um. We had a, a first look at the, the governor's uh budget from the state level, um, I think came uh January twenty fourth this year. Um, so, you know, it, it's definitely hard to um. Plan if you don't kind of know where some of your funds are coming from and exactly how much money you're getting. Um, so to, you know, to, to say that, you know, if our charter is saying January twenty fifth, I mean, this year that would have been. Absolutely physically impossible to have uh a budget uh together. I mean, you know, maybe Mr. Sullivan uh can be a miracle worker and uh. You know, make things happen in a twenty-four hour period. He can do a lot of things. I just don't know if that's a, that's one of them. Um, so I, I think it definitely uh makes sense that uh we, we move that date, you know, whatever that might be, you know, whether it be sometime in March, like uh. You know, Mr. Slaven just mentioned, um, but definitely, uh, definitely something to be addressed because uh we need to make the, the job a little, a little easier and not. A little easier and not so stressful so that we can uh, make sure that we have uh, you know, uh, a proper budget that that. To fix everything that the town needs. So uh, I'm I'm definitely in agreement with uh, making some type of a change.
Thanks, Mr. Chadwick.
Nothing.
Okay. Um, Mr. Sullivan, I'm gonna ask you to weigh in if you choose to. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with making it March fifteenth. I'm sort of wondering whether we can have some smushable language that would be a time agreeable to. The Select Board Finance Committee, which might, I I don't know, I I I I don't. It needs to be changed, I do know that. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, so um, thank you for your consideration in this matter. I know that the uh. Finance Committee had brought it up as well. And just so some of the people listening understand, uh. When about twenty-five percent of our uh, revenue is coming from state aid. And we also have over six million dollars in assessments, that can be extremely difficult. To try and figure it out because one of our other big cost drivers, uh, Upper Cape Cod Tech. Also is dependent on the state aid as well. So trying to bring these all in line and then you don't have a, a lot of the items, uh. You know, it's, it can be difficult when we we run it kind of tightly. So um. I would say you start looking at, so for example, I know on March seventh. Of this year, the May Florida Municipal Health Group, but the general board meeting will be held. To set the rates, but the steering committee will set their recommendations in the end of February. Um, you know, so it's. I think you're gonna try and push towards at least the end of February to try and get into the range. Our goal here is to have a substantially complete budget. Um, for for everyone to be put out there. As you know, we could, it's been more than a few times, you keep on tweaking it along the way. You you give a budget, you present it, it's ba- based on your best estimates. And then things just keep on changing. And those are, and those are mainly, so people understand, those are the, what you call the fixed costs. Those are outside of our control, which is between the state aid, uh, healthcare, our insurances. Uh, Upper Cape Cod Tech, things like that. And then those are right now a majority of our 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 budgets, a big portion. So. Trying to push it towards the end of February, I'm just trying to think with uh. Town meeting, then once you've got that, the Finance Committee has to hold a uh. Has to hold their their hearing, well, their budget meetings on it. So I would say end of February, early, early March at the at the latest on there. Um. You know, it's uh, I think that's what the range you're looking in. I understand what the chairperson's trying to say that. There may be some years like a COVID year, there may be. Um, I think last year, the the first iteration of the governor's budget didn't come out hi- until February or. Or something, and you're correct, we didn't, we usually don't get our finalized state budget until September. And people will tell you, well, that's uh, that's what you have the fall town meeting for. By the time you're taking fall town meeting actions, you're ha- you're almost halfway done. Here, you know, so the the, if you have to make cuts, you're basically making double cuts at at that point. So. Yeah, that's um, I know that's more of a background of it, so, but I would say. End of February and such, and just trying to uh, you know, beginning March makes makes a lot of sense. If you'd like to put some sort of clause in there that um, you know, upon vote, you know, I I just. I don't want to overcomplicate it, you know what I mean? Because you'll, especially if you're, this is gonna be brought to town meeting floor. And you could get a million different amendments on it and just confuse the whole thing, so. I think we set a date certain, we put out the best budget that we can.
Okay. Mr. Slaven, you went to the Finance Committee meeting where they discussed this as well, am I correct?
Yeah, uh, same basic thought process, that their concern was as long as they get. The information because of what they have to put together and put the booklets out, et cetera. Uh, I'm a firm believer in doing it once, doing it right, as everybody knows. I like the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid. Pick a date, you know, and that's it. Because if you sit there with a clause in there for a floater, you get into trouble, basically. So, uh, you know, the the March fifteenth date, the reason why I picked it is it gives us a little leeway. In case things happen that was out of our control. And if Mr. Sullivan, for some reason, has an epiphany. And gets his budget completely down locked in by the middle of February, then he presents it.
Um, I, the chair of the FinCom has raised her hand. Mr. Bowen, it's not a hearing. But she is the chair and they did discuss this in a meeting. Would it be you okay if I let her into this meeting? Mr. Bowen?
Sure.
Okay. Um, Noah, would you let Ms. Scoggan into the meeting? Noah Sullivan, please. This would be a charter change, and I would recommend if we think that we want to do it, we get it into the specials town meeting so that it gets. Done and.
Yeah, it would be, not only a charter change, but bylaw changes. Because it goes into the bylaws as well as the charter, the dates.
No, the first one is a is a bylaw change, the second one is a charter change. Sorry.
But it affects, it it affects the capital planning.
Oh, it affects everything. Yeah.
You know, it's four different areas.
Ms. Scoggan, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, this is Norma Scoggan. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. Uh, appreciate you taking this up. Um, it is of concern certainly to me personally, and I think probably the Finance Committee in general. That we not uh, put people through unnecessary exercise of guessing at what our numbers are gonna be and. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, Sullivan is incredibly hardworking uh, employee of this town. Uh, really appreciate all this to have his effort, but he does not see the future. Uh, he comes close, but does not quite see the future. And um, I would like to make it possible for him to. Focus his energies on things that he has all the information he needs about. So I do believe this is an important thing to um, to, an important change to make.
Would the, would the February twenty-eighth day be okay with your committee, do you think? I know that your committee discussed it, may not have voted on it.
We did not vote on it, but I do think that uh, February twenty-eighth is a good, a good target. We clearly have not been able to hit the twenty-fifth, although we barely missed it, um, just because. Mr. Sullivan has done so much advanced work, but we still aren't using firm numbers until we have the information from the state.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this? No, um, then I will accept a motion that we. Um, prepare an article, warrant article for the town meeting. Um, to have a charter change for section five dash three to make the date. Be mart- February twenty-eighth instead of the January twenty-fifth. Is there, may I have that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
I'm gonna stay, I think it should be a later date.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, I I went with that number, Mr. Slaven, because Derek picked it. Anyway, uh, thank you, Ms. Scoggan, and good evening. Okay, we'll move on next to um, to 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 to. The discussion of possible vote to approve the revised recycling policy, you were given that. Um, Mr. Sullivan, would you address that, please, sir? It is in the packet.
The recycling policy is being done. Make sure that you can get the recycling credits. You get about ten to twelve thousand dollars a year. It does not go to um, the uh, trash program. It goes to the recycling committee's been utilizing it. And and um, the, hold on a minute. Now, now I'm sure, just uh, we're having a little bit of an issue over here. Just voted in, uh. Let me put it this way, it costs a lot of money, you don't get a lot of return.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, go ahead, Mr. Sullivan. Um, it would be a select. Board policy, you have a a draft in here, you've had it for a couple of days. Are there any further, any further comments on that? And if not, I'll accept a motion to. Approve a rev- and adopt, it would be adopt a revised recycling policy. Now, I'll accept it. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the policy. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, um, I'm going to ask. We don't have anything else. We've done everything else above, right? Except for the J, my, yeah, yes, we have.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick, I'm gonna ask you to read the notice of the twenty twenty-four Spring Town Meeting. And Town Election Notice, which will be posted in, on the town website as well as delivered by the Constable tomorrow morning.
Received, all right. Town of Wareham Select Board Notice of twenty twenty-four Spring Town Meeting and Town Election Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth, SS. To either of the Constables of the Town of Wareham greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in accordance with the provisions of Division One, Article One, Section Three of the bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended. You are hereby direct, directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the Town of Wareham. That the general business portion of the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting has been called by the Town of Wareham Select Board to be held. At seven PM on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And the elections of officers will be held from eight AM to eight PM on Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four. The last day for submission of citizens petition articles for insertion into the warrant is five PM Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And you are hereby directed to serve this notice by posting uh, tested copies there for, thereof. In at least one public place in each precinct within the town on or before Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-four. Hereof fail not and make due return of this posting with your doing thereon to the town clerk. Given under our hands at Wareham the sixth day of February in the year twenty twenty-four, a true attested. Uh, true copy attested, sign the Town of Wareham Select Board.
Okay, um. Um, may, let's see, do I need a motion? Nope, don't need a motion. So that will be posted tomorrow morning on the website. Um, the last day, the warrant will close on February twenty-seventh, it will open on February seventeenth. And we read that into the record a couple of weeks ago. So we're all set on that. I have no forty-eight hour business. And we do not have any minutes. Um, I'm going to ask the town administrator, uh, if he would like to do his budget. We do have an executive session to go into subsequent to finishing off his um, town administrator's report. Um. Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
I have it, if you if you want, um, I can, if you, I can send it to you that uh. And if you want to review it for the next meeting, or if you want to just go over it, it's whatever.
Well, why don't we just um, have you send it to us? And we we will do that, Mr. Sullivan, that's fine with me.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Mr. Sullivan, I don't think that we need you for the rest of the meeting, if that, if you would like to leave.
Okay, I I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Um, liaison initiative reports, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, the uh, Finance Committee did have some discussions on the. Certain things that they would like to see if they could get some technical assistance and help on. Uh, I think the discussion really was the town departments, including the school, to find where there might be some synergies. Uh, where they can become more effective and, you you know, also, uh, it's not so much as trying to eliminate help. As to be more productive for the money we spend, et cetera. So I've, uh, today, uh. I basically sent over the request to the Serpent Executive Director. And come back with a recommendation of who to sit and talk with, et cetera. Uh, to put this together, I think it's gonna be Grant King, so that's something that's gonna get started working out, it looks like. Also, uh, uh, the Planning Board, uh, the representative there. Uh, Sherry Quirk had some things that she wanted to do as far as energy and environment, et cetera. And uh, they've actually submitted uh, to me, which I forwarded this morning as well. Uh, a request for technical assistance to, uh, Serpent again for work that's done. Both of these usually generate twenty hours of no charge, and sometimes the. Projects they want to do might require that the town spend some money, but it's still a lot less than hiring a consultant. So. We're looking at ways again to take what we have for a dollar and finding the best ways to make that dollar work for us. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Bessie? Liaison, any comments?
Not, nothing tonight.
Thanks. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, I'm, I'm actually gonna hold off until our next meeting.
Okay, great, me, me as well. Um, so. We will be going into executive session for reason number two. I'm gonna ask Mr. Chadwick to read that in a moment. We will be um, adjourning from the executive session. And we will be taking a five-minute break from the time that we vote to go into executive session before we open the executive session. During that five minutes, the audience or attendees will be uh, cleared and the public will no longer be able to. Uh, be part of the meeting. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I move to go into executive session, uh, MGL thirty A twenty-one, reason two. To conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations, negotiations with non-union personnel.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And the chair declares that this is a necessity. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yeah, I'm gonna go play with my chainsaw now.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will be resuming at eight sixteen, gentlemen, and Mr. Bowen will be staying with us. The rest of you, good night, Wareham. And thank you very much. Five-minute break, guys.